So my name is David Dwyer. I'm one of the co-chairs for the Citizen Advisory Committee. So I just wanted to first say thank you all for joining us here today at the O'Fallon Rec Complex. We're excited to get started with you all. So first, I wanted to point out that it'll be relevant to some of the discussion that we'll have later on or have opportunity for in public comment. But we have two giant sticky notepads over there asking what topics you think are important for the candidates for police chief to be asked. So we encourage you all throughout the meeting or afterwards to write up there. We do listen to what you all say. We write these up into summaries. They get posted online and that we all read. So we really would appreciate your feedback, both in public comment and also on these pages. So first up on our agenda after the welcome, Judge Edwards, Jimmy Edwards, has joined us today. As many of you have likely heard, he has been appointed as Public Safety Director for the city of St. Louis. And we're thankful that he's here to speak with you all today and introduce himself.
Thank you. You know, that's amazing. You know, when I walk into my courtroom, everybody stands up and nobody claps. Well, thank you. Citizen Advisory Committee, thank you so very much. I know most of you. I don't know all of you, but just as the courts, I believe that the St. Louis Police Department belongs to the citizens of the city of St. Louis. And I appreciate very much your hard work and your endeavors. So thank you, thank you on behalf of myself. And of course, Marilie DeCruze, she appointed me. In fact, how many of you guys were shocked that I left the bench to become the director? I just want you to know that my wife asked me, "Are you serious?" I am. I am. The mayor courted me. And finally, I just looked her in the eyes and I said to her, "I respect you. I love our city more." And because I love our city, I think that I can help. You see, I've been on the bench for 25 years in the city of St. Louis. I've seen the worst and I've seen the very best of the citizens of the city of St. Louis. I have had encounters with police officers almost every single day for the last 25 years. Now, I know that there are trust gaps in our city between police officers and particularly African-Americans in our city. I know that. But let me say at the outset that the vast amount of young men and women that are serving on the St. Louis Police Department are not so bad after all. They're not. We have a small group of folk perhaps should not be police officers. But that doesn't mean that our police department is bad. You, all you have to do is turn on the news. And I don't want to throw these other cities under the bus, Philadelphia. I don't want to throw the other cities under the bus, New Orleans. We have a decent police department. We have to fix some things in that police department. I believe we fix those things by education. Every single year, there needs to be some education about search warrants, about how to identify, about the use of force. Every single year, there needs to be an evaluation, a mental evaluation. See, PTSD happens. You don't have to be at war for that to happen. We have to address that. We have to address our own implicit biases. We all have that. We have to look internally. Do we do good when nobody's looking? You see, that's what I'm looking for in a police chief. And I hope that this committee will give me six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people to choose from. By December 15th, I want a police chief. We have to have a police chief. I'd like to see that done by the end of the year, which means that you have some work to do. And we need to get that done. Because how can we expect the men and women on our police department to continue to go to work every day with this interim over their heads? The morale has to be low, but yet we expect them to go out every single day to serve and protect. So make no doubt about it, I support police. I always have. What I don't support, I don't support bad police. I don't support police that don't respect our citizens. Don't we respect police officers that don't believe that they work for you? I've always worked for you. And that's what, that's what I want. And so what I provided the committee with, I provided them with a transcript about 98, 99 pages of solutions. You see, I invited the protesters into my courtroom. I invited the police into my courtroom. I invited law professors and students. I invited the public into my courtroom on October the 9th. And they came into the courtroom and they provided me with their ideas and their solutions as to what they expect our court should look like and be. And we talked a lot about police officers and what they should look like and be. Much to my happiness, we all want the exact same thing. We all want the exact same thing. We want every single community in the city of St. Louis to be police in the exact same way. We want some respect. We want restraint. We want understanding. And we want fairness and equitable policing in our city. That's what I would like to see. I suspect that you would like to see the same. So I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself to you and opportunity to just give you a glimpse of who I am. For 25 years, I have made decisions and I've stood on those decisions. And so I will pledge to all of you that we will be, first of all, accountable. And secondly, we will be transparent. And thirdly, I'm a pretty good listener. I listen to every single thing that you have to say. You see, in my mind, listening is the first sign of respect. It's the very first sign of respect. And that, I guarantee you. And so, we've heard all of these things on this fringe and on that fringe. I was embarrassed when I saw what happened to our mayor at Hardestale State University. I was embarrassed because we have to listen. We can disagree. We're not going, we're not going to agree. So don't expect that you're going to agree with every single thing that I do. But I hope that you respect the fact that I've worked hard, that I've worked diligently for you, and I've always tried to do the right thing for you. The only thing that I ask of our citizens is that they give us a chance. Give us a chance to show that we're going to move the needle. I'm not naive enough to know that we, we can't stay where we are. We have to do something differently. And so we're going to have to start to, not to be so angry every now and then. And of course, the mayor can defend herself. I'm not here to defend her. She can defend herself. But just give us an opportunity to serve and to protect you. That's the only thing that I'm asking. Thank you very much for allowing me to come up and just say hello to you. Thank you all.
Okay, so we are now going to go through those who have signed up for public comment.
My name is Ruby Dowdson. And I'm a member of Our Lady of the Holy Cross Parish in the Baden area and also Metropolitan Congregation United, MCU. In August, MCU's Police Report Task Force hosted two small town hall meetings. We wanted to give an opportunity to the community to have their input and what we wanted for the new police chief. We had some very interesting conversations and some powerful witnesses at this small gathering. I am presenting our final report to the committee, additional information, with additional information we hope to help you make your decision. I also have a one-page copy that I can give to anyone else. Let me read, I'll let you read it, but I will note that our top three traits for a new police chiefs are: A demonstrated commitment to racial and ethnic equality; A commitment to work with community members and leaders; A chief that will hold all heads on her, all versus accountable. We also insist that the public be given the opportunity to meet the final candidate with some type of form, and MCU will be willing to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to say that I don't disagree with Judge Edwards when he talks about the need to get some police officers out of the police force. But I'm always a little bit wary of that conversation because I think it overlooks the systemic problems that we have in the police department. I think that we have fallen victim to a style of policing and a method of policing that is based, overly based on arrest and incarcerate and which is militarized and which is not serving our community. It's doing as much to disrupt our community as it is to do anything else. And so I hope that you all keep that part of the conversation in mind as you go into your interviews with candidates. One of the things that I was really pleased when I came in today was to see this particular handout that you all put together. And why it excited me so much is because I do think that it really does represent a transformative vision of what policing could be. And that's what came from our citizens. I think over the course, especially of the last three years, we've gone through a whole community education process and the community knows what it wants, is very clear about what it wants. And you all captured that in your forums. And so I applaud you for that and I applaud the community for the transformative vision that we've all put forward. I do have to say that I feel like some of this got lost in the brochure that you all created for the, for the job search. It was a little bit of a template, a little bit canned. Towards the end, it had some of these ideas captured in it, but it didn't really jump out at you as the bold vision that I think people are looking for. So I hope that you all can compensate for that as you go into the interview process and as you talk about candidates and really put forward the vision that St. Louis wants to see. Towards that end, I think we're going into a period now of a little bit less transparency, a little bit less community input, and that's a natural part of the process. It has to do with the need for confidentiality of the candidates. So it's understandable. But we don't know at this point a lot about the search process as it's gone forward so far. And so one suggestion I have is that you all might want to do a report back to the community about the search process and what it looked like. Who did you reach out to to get information? You are the search team. Who did you reach out to to get information? What cities did you kind of hold up as models and perhaps look at for candidates? What is the racial composition of the overall candidate pool and other, maybe even the philosophical point of view of some of those, of the candidates? That kind of public transparency, I think, would help build more faith in the system. It would help us as we go into the final stage of the process. So I hope that's something that you'll consider as we move forward. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I have George Adams next.
I just want a police chief that take murder just as serious on the north side as you take central west end. And that's the problem I've seen over the years that I've been in the city 42 years and I think only one person that I know murdered been solved ever. And when people say that people don't come forward, I know of people that came forward. And like I said, some murders get taken more serious. But something I want you all to understand, when the individual murders someone and the police don't take it serious, it's a good chance that individual that did the murder don't murder someone else. So I'm going to go back in the shadows, but when I look at these boards and I look around, I don't see too many people like me that grew up like me. And I just hear it because I want my sons for the future of them. But my life is determined, you know, make a better future for them. But there's a lot of us that came up like me, that we doing our part by raising our kids, that we in the shadows. And sometimes the messenger, the message get distorted by whoever the messenger are. So what we decide to do, we going to do our part, raise our kids. And a lot of our kids are going to private schools, college now. But the fathers and mothers grew up and, how to say it? When I see the protests now, I see, I say, man, I sit back and I just observe. I said, some of the same protesters that's taking up for some of these people that's out here. So I'm still in the community. And something I want you all to understand, I don't want a police chief, how to say it? I don't want a police chief that's passive. We have to find a balance because it is a group of individuals out there that's, I call them zombies, meaning while we in here taking up for them, we want rights, we want, we want to make sure the police don't abuse their rights. Those same individuals, when I leave out here, will rob me and kill me too. So we have to understand, I don't hate all police, but I also seen the dirt that police do, motor reserves, gang units, scats, narcotics, all of it. I can name them, but we don't hold grudges. When you're doing wrong, you take some of that as part of the life out there. But when such and such live out, what, three officers lived in Onom, Missouri? One of them live in Manchester? That tells you enough how we need that rule back that if you work in the city, you should live in the city. If you are really serious about that. But if not, you know, three officers live in Onom, Missouri on the same street and one of them live in Manchester, how can he come down here and understand what anyone go through? So that's something you all need to understand. But I don't want a passive police chief and also don't want O2s who's over the motor reserves back in the day. Everybody knew motor reserves hit the neighborhood, pretty much something going down wrong. Sometimes deserve. I'm not going to sit there and tell you, "We don't need that type of police." Because like I said, I'm still in the community and there's some zombies out there that don't have reason. Meaning you can talk to them, you can take up for them, you can say, "Hey, police off, get your hands off." That same individual will rob and kill you too. So we need a balance. But good luck. I'll be in the shadows watching. But I, it's a gang of fathers out there and mothers and we all observing, but we just sit in the shadows. So I'm going to go back in the shadows.
First, I'd like to give a word of gratitude and thank you for your service on this committee. I know it's a lot of time for you to do that. And thanks for hosting this forum where the community gets to share our thoughts. I would make the argument that for the new chief of police, racism is not an issue for that person to respond to. I think it's actually the issue that the police chief needs to come in and understand what the city is dealing with. If we don't get that right, nothing is right. And that is key for the next person. I posted out this morning on Facebook, said, "What questions would you like the committee to ask the new chief of police?" So I got a list of them. I'm not going to rattle them off. I printed them off. I'm going to pass them off to you. These are people that are local, people that are across the country, that have seen what's been going on here in St. Louis and understand the justice issue that's happening here in our city. So two questions for you, and you can, you could choose if you want to address it now or you can choose to address it amongst yourselves. I would like to know as a committee, what work have you done to look at racism, discrimination, your biases as you're going through this process? As we recognize, we live in a racist society and we all have biases. And so when you're doing interviewing out to candidates, what have you done internally to ensure that your biases don't get in the way of selecting a candidate? And then the other question along the same line is, the search committee, the search firm that you've hired, what questions do you ask them about what processes they put in place so they're not being biased when they're identifying the candidates for you to interview? Thank you.
Next, we have Breann Healy.
Okay. I have a two-part question, piggybacking off of some of the other people. I want to know what is being done to weed out bad police officers and provide ways for good police officers to speak out about officers that fail in doing their jobs correctly? Because at meetings like this, everywhere you go, people are always touted about the good police, the good police, the good police. The good police are silent when we're being murdered on the streets every day. And the second part is, the person that you're looking for, do they have a background that includes holding an incident or incidents of holding officers accountable for wrongdoing? Because if they're not able to hold officers accountable for wrongdoing and they keep talking about the good police, all you have to do is pay attention to any video and see that all the police can be good. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Cage. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to Judge Edwards for speaking on behalf of what we actually feel. And just some of the things that I think we need from the new police chief is transparency, for one. A chief who doesn't see blacks as the enemy. A lot of people consider us as the enemy. We're citizens, just like taxpaying citizens. And sometimes we get treated like hardcore criminals. Even when we out there protesting, a lot of our rights get violated. We want a chief that's going to understand and give us our, give us our right to express our constitutional freedom, our freedom of speech. And we also want a chief that understands, a chief that's young enough to grow, but old enough to know how we feel. You know, and that's real talk. You know, so we have to have a chief to understand our youth out there. You know, only thing they see a black, a young black man crack his head, storming jail or whatever. We got a lot of black males out there that needs, they just, when you got officers out there that treats, treat them the way they do, what you expect. You know, I grew up in St. Louis, right here in the city, home G-ville, where I was born. This is, this is my city. This is our city. And we need to start stepping this as our city. And like I say, you get a lot of those officers who sometimes, remember that old saying that Uncle Bill told Spider-Man, "With great power comes great responsibility." And sometimes these officers, some of these officers out here, they don't understand us. Some of them got a gung-ho attitude. They just want to kick ass or do whatever they want. They feel that's okay. I'm telling you, I grew up here. I seen it happen to me. I seen it happen to people within our community. So we going to need a police chief that understands how we feel, what we feel, and understand that a chief who understands our youth and know that it's better to educate than incarcerate. Yeah, but like I say, everybody want to incarcerate everyone, you know? I want, I want a police chief that holds, just like the young individual male, the guy, the young male that got killed at the bus stop, the 16-year-old, because he didn't never get a chance to testify at a, I mean, at this murder scene. You asking people to come testify at murders, but you don't even protect them. Now, this young man is dead and gone. We still got to get our crime rate lowered. When it's all said and done, we going to hold the police accountable, but we got to start locking the criminals up. But at the same time, we got, if you want people to be out there to help you, you got to be, we got to be able to trust you. So if we don't trust you, you're not going to get no help from them. So you got to have a police, a police chief that's willing to understand that. Like I said, maybe Captain Cousins, he's local. He's one thing. We always trying to find people from outside, from outside our sources. I'm quite sure we could find some officers that's qualified, that understands where we coming from. You go get these officers, they don't have a clue about, this city is predominantly black. We can't, we can't fool ourselves and pretend like it's not. We have a lot of African-Americans out here. You got to understand where they're coming from. And we have to get a police force that's willing to work with our youths, work with our people, and understand that if we don't get a police chief that's transparent, that's transparent, that's going to hold his officers accountable for what they do with their actions, we're going, we would never get these issues resolved. We'll be right back to day one. Sometime I wonder if this still 1968 instead of 2017, the way these police officers treat us around here. Like they say, they took the water hose and brought out the pepper spray. Now, you used to use the water hose back in the day, now they using the pepper spray. It's the same thing. And that means it's like, and nobody want to be, nobody want to be held accountable. I've never seen that police chief, that interim police chief, say anything that will make us want that he would, he would even be remotely qualified for the cap, the police chief or the St. Louis City Police Department. Also, a chief, a chief who knows how to, that needs a chief who will understand what St. Louis needs, a chief that will support programs to curtail crime. You know, it's other means, and that's like I say, we got to have programs out there for our youths and things out there to find other things that are other than them just want to just go out and do things that they shouldn't be doing. So that goes back to our police force and our police chief, starts at the top. So if we got a chief that don't want to hold his officers accountable for their wrongdoing, like I said, a lot of those officers that come, that live outside our community, I've seen them do it to me when I was youth, when I was a youngster coming up. I see them happening. I see them doing to my kids and other kids around them. Some of these officers are prejudiced. They got KKKKKKKK hoods all over their heads. And I'm telling you the truth. And we got quite a few of them in there. And they love to do what they love to do. And that's cause havoc and damage within our African-American community, create chaos. If you keep chaos within our community, we can never have unity because you keep, you keep chaos all going along. So we need a police chief that's going to start holding all of these officers accountable for all of their actions. And we need a police chief that when one of their officers kill one of us, murder one of us, assassinate one of us, prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law, just like they would do us. We get locked up for a traffic ticket and can't get out of jail, lose our job. We lose our job for a traffic ticket. That's unbelievable. But yet it still, this officer can blow somebody brains out and have video coverage of it and even hurt you. You calling him, "I'm going to kill me a nigger today." But yet still, he's a free man. So what you expect? You're going to expect, you're going to expect unrest. And so if until, until you all start to hold your police officers accountable for their actions, you're going to always have these type of situations. So I'm hoping that we get a police chief that's within our community. We don't have to go to Washington DC or to Nebraska, anybody else, go to all these places to find someone that's qualified. Like I say, I don't understand, you know, we took, I think Cousins was one of, and we maybe have a father, a few other people. Why his name not brought up? He understand, you have to have a chief that's going to understand us. So sometimes you have to break rank and go outside the box and find, and just say, "Look, if we want to make this community better, we can't, it ain't about what child, what the people want, about, he committed about what the community wants and what the community needs." And we need a officer, a police chief that we will be willing to respect and trust more than anything. Thank you.
So we have Tori Russell.
How y'all doing? I guess we here at the next dog and pony shop. I hope not, that we not just having another panel, another group. Three years after Ferguson, we had a Ferguson Commission. It was no different from the Kerner Commission back in the 60s. So we keep having this game. And I know Judge Edwards said that we should listen to Mayor Cruz, but she been an older person. She wanted to be the mayor, she should have some foresight. You know, I would like to have a police chief who live somewhere that look like North of Delmar or just live north of Delmar. Even in the election, we didn't have too many people who live north of Delmar in the election, black or white. And so I would like somebody to, to live in that bad place that everybody afraid to go. I think that, of course, we need subpoena power for the civilian oversight board, but I do think that we need some kind of accountability. I really do. If I'm looking at the civilian oversight board, most of those If I'm looking at the civilian oversight board, most of those people need to go home too. We need some more gang members, some more formerly incarcerated people, some of those kind of folk. They ain't got no letters after their name, some of them people, so we can, we can know what it really is. We need a police chief that's real, you know, that's really going to do some, I need somebody who walked these streets before. I need a police chief that's going fire O2, fire Lake Shaw, fire Rosamano, fire Seagoz, fire Wagon. Fire all those racist police who wanted to hit their patines on the streets, screaming "Who's streets?" All them got to go. And so we can have a conversation around listening, I ain't listening to you. I love you, Judge, but I can't, I can't allow the same races to take off the Robocop suit and come back into the hood. Because I don't know about y'all, but we tired, we tired of being abused. We tired of having jump-out boys jump out on me. And so I hope the new police chief have undercover police that ride around and try to get the police officers like they tried to get me in the hood. I would like to see something radical like that. I would like to see them put more than five or 10, or however much money they put in the community engagement for the police, to put some real money to engage the community. It's a shame that they don't invest in community engagement. All they got for us is some ice cream. That's their community engagement. And you might, and you might get to touch the pony on the way by. And so that's not community engagement. We need to give all them, all that stuff that shot, that tear gas, that need to go. All that international, you know, things that if we was in, if we was in Palestine, well, my bad, I'm sorry, if we was anywhere in Europe, and they use that Israeli pepper spray, that animal thing on me, that's a war crime in international law. And so all those people need to go. And all those things that they bought, all those shiny things need to go home with them. And so we can have a dialogue about listening, but I don't listen to racists. I don't have no dialogue with you. And if they can't do that, then I think that the radical change needs to come out of the Public Safety Committee or the Board of Aldermen to radically reduce funding to the police. We, we don't have infrastructure for our city wrecks. Kim Garner is living probably in the early 19th century, maybe the 20th century. She does not have digital servers and things to keep up with this. We don't invest in public defenders, even though we know we locking people up, we free case them. And so it's a shame that a person like Seagoz would get a promotion to create more racists. But you know, that's just what the police do here. Also, one big thing, if you go to the police department, they have a Veil Foundation, and we all know that that's the Veil Profit Foundation. We all know that that's the KKK Foundation. So I'm not in support of any of that. And so if they can't remove that foundation, and Procter &amp; Gamble want to continue to give grants and all these fun things for them to do all this other stuff, then that needs to be removed. And so if they can't get it together, meaning St. Louis Police Organization or Association, then maybe, just maybe, the radical change out of the Board of Aldermen or whoever can do this, is change the contract and give it to the ethical society to be our new police entity, to police our streets. It's just a union contract. We supposed to be a democratic city, so they say, until we need education, poverty, solution to homelessness, and then we magically become Republican. But maybe, changing the union, since everybody like to scream about right to work, maybe we change that, that contract and give it to ethical society so they can do their audit to make sure, you know, that the officers actually are having overtime for real and not just signing their name and having their partner sign their name to something. I'm really mad. And I'm mad because I know that by the time somebody going to get this and implement whatever they going to say they going to do, one of my homeboys going to die. Somebody going to be locked up, and I'm going to be visiting and trying to put some money on their books at the Justice Center or the Workhouse. And so as we spending money and trying to find these things out, and everybody wants to have these dialogues and commissions and all of that, I'm dying. And so until we get it, we going to shut this city down. We going to continue to do that. And so, good luck Cardinals. See y'all on opening day.
I thought I was signing in, but now that I got the opportunity to say something, I'd like to say something. I'd like to thank the mayor for having the, the good sense and the knowledge of whatever you want to call it, to realize that the North is now the Old South. I mean, all you got to do to be in law enforcement, a prerequisite for being a police officer is to be prejudiced. Okay, you get you a badge, get you a gun, I mean, you got license to kill, and that's scary. I left Mississippi in 1969. I got fired from a babysitting job because I said yes and no to a young lady of the Caucasian persuasion, younger than me. I was in 10th grade, she had to drop out, get married to one of those businessmen in town, had two kids. Now, I'm 10th grade now, and she getting dressed, going out, asking me questions that require yes and no answers. And I responded with yes and no. Oh, I got fired, because I said yes and no to her, and I was doing my black history homework while I was on the job. So this is the New South. We all need to realize that, okay? And with the mayor doing what she's doing, yeah, I'm just praying to God that we can, you know, turn this around. Because this is, this is, this is a place that I came to thinking that my life was going to be better. Okay, well, my life was better to a point. But when I got to the point where when my son left home, I had to be worried and pray that he would make it back, you know, I realized then that this, this was going the wrong way. And it's, I mean, we see it now. I mean, old, old black people, black men and women are being murdered and harassed and disregarded. That, that shouldn't be. This is a place where everybody is supposed to be important. People are dying to come here to, to be an American. And we here fighting to stay American, but we being killed and murdered and disrespected and disregarded. And that, that just don't seem to be right. And when we got us a black president, now, he's a real, he is really an African, he was, the real African-American, okay? His daddy African, his mama American. And that should have given everybody a sign then that we should be going in a new direction. Okay? We can't always stay Anglo, you know? There's nobody in here that's 100% nothing, okay? But again, I just want to thank the mayor, you guys, and I'm watching you, Judge. I watch, I got my eyes on you. All right, thank you.
Good evening. A couple of things really struck me when Judge Edwards gave his introduction at the beginning. First of all, his statement that we have a good police department with a few bad officers. And second of all, he said at the end of his speech that we have to all stop being so angry. Well, what we have in the St. Louis Police Department isn't a few bad officers. What we have is a top-to-bottom cultural problem that results in disparities, not only when officers treat black subjects differently and more harshly and kill them more often, but even neglecting the black community. I was struck, I've been to a few protests myself. When we protested in the Central West End, there was an army of police officers. When we protested down by the stadium, there were cops everywhere. We went up to Walnut Park and had a protest, and I saw two cars. We could have smashed out every window in Walnut Park, and there wouldn't have been a cop there to stop us. Now, if that's the area where the crime is, I would think on an ordinary day, I'd have seen more than two cops in the, in the two hours we were walking around Walnut Park, but it doesn't happen. Because we have a cultural problem in that department that doesn't care about what happens on the black side of St. Louis. That needs to change. Until that does change, people are going to be angry. And Judge Edwards is not going to be a conciliator in that position. People are going to be in the streets. My family lives on the West Coast, and my mother called me the other night, and she said, "Y'all people in St. Louis just won't stop protesting." And I said, "Mom, if we don't get no justice, they won't get no peace. Expect us."
Sorry if I messed this up. Melden Moffett.
Thank you. How you all know? Committee, and I applaud y'all for the effort. I'm going to be honest, you all are not going to be able to solve our problem, not even the mayor. No disrespect to the judge, him either. If this has been going on since, what, years before us, and it's 2017 going on 2018, what makes you all think the candidates that you are going to get are going to solve our problem? They're not. You know why? Majority of the police chief that you all get, all they think about is putting the white officers in the black communities, in the poverty communities, where they can assess blacks with drugs, tickets, whatever else they can come up with, even killings. But yet, still, the mayor sits back and act like this is not a problem. If it's not a problem, why are we asking O2 to be removed? Under his watch, there has been eight murders, going on nine murders since he's been, what, intern? But we asked the mayor, why is it so hard for her to remove him? I'll tell you all why. Everybody why. Because O2 does exactly what the rest of them do. They put the officers where they need to be to control the Negroes. And you all know this. If we have spoken about this since the Mike Brown movement four years ago, and we still up doing the same thing now, what makes you all think that you are going to solve our problem by finding these candidates? None of these candidates are going to come from our communities, none of these candidates are going to step next door to us, none of these candidates have never gave us sugar, none of these candidates have never gave us a ride to work, none of these candidates have ever even came to the community to even care about the murders that are happening in our community. But yet, still, you want us to come here to voice our views about applying one? No. You think, you want me to tell you who I think the candidates are for the police chief? The community, the protesters, the activists. You know why? Because they are going to look for the real justice. They are not going to be biased. They're not going to look around and say, "Hey, that's my brother," or "He killed somebody in my family." No, they're not going to do that. They're going to do the same as the officers needs to be done. If you can prosecute me for murder, why can't an officer be prosecuted for murder? My point is this, I was given 25 years, just listen to me, I was given 30 years for armed criminal action and first-degree robbery in the state. In the federal department, they gave me six, they gave me five years, which is 60 months. I've served 18 years of my life in prison. So don't tell me that if you get these candidates, because these are the same candidates that be in prison oppressing the same black folks, then you'll put them right back in our communities and expect for them to make a change. They're going to keep an uproar, and we're going to be disruptive, as one of my comrades just told you, we don't need a police chief anymore, because none of them are going to accomplish the job that we need. They're not going to solve our racial problem. You know how I know they're not? Because one of the guys just said it, if you can give a damn about which stadium, and the Central West End, or either out there in the North Counties and them malls, but when it comes to our community where all these problems are happening, you all just turn your offs back. So, and to me, no disrespect to any of you, all the candidates that you're going to get, I'm going to turn my back on all of them, because I know damn well, they're not going to give a [__] about nobody that's dying in my community. Because you know how I know? Because none of them, right to this day, have came to any memorial that we have had and show any respect to any of these families. They have lost their children to police brutality, but you want us to sit here and give you resolutions? We already found our resolutions. Disruptiveness, we going to take this economy and turn it upside down. We going to make sure that you all make another dollar in this community ever again, because we know your dollars are not going to the impoverished community, it's going to your wealthy pockets and those rich houses that you live in. So you know what I believe in? Justice. And we don't need y'all, we just need us.
Thank you, Melden. Chuck Mariano.
Yeah, good evening, Chuck Mariano. I'm actually not from St. Louis, I'm from out of town, we live in the Washington DC area. Wanted to just give a little bit of an out-of-town perspective, because I first came here three years ago during the Ferguson uprising, and like anybody else came from out of town, it was quite different. Everything was quite different. And once you get tear gassed, you know, for peacefully protesting, I was there one of those nights, and everybody came back, they said, "Is this America? And like, what's going on here? This feels like Baghdad." And I share Mel's lack of optimism about moving forward, and I'll tell you why. If there were lessons to learn from how protesters were attacked in Ferguson post-Mike Brown, I haven't seen them in the last three years. Cue a year later, there was Mansour Ball Bay, came back down a year later to cover and letter the protest. If, there must have been some meetings that said the tear gas we use in Ferguson wasn't strong enough, because the tear gas that was used after Mansour Ball Bay was some new military crazy grade stuff, never felt anything like it in my life, coughing up lungs, everything. Everybody who came was like, "What is this stuff?" So I have to wonder what was the lesson and what were the meetings at the table from the Ferguson? Then you come back, and we, we come back, now we're around year three, we have a Jason Stockley verdict, where even police officers, the ethical society of police in almost unprecedented ways said, "This man is guilty. We don't see that." That's a police, so yeah, I applaud those police who came out and did that. And yet, the response by the police officers to the protesters got even worse. There was the kettling, we know about the kettling. We know about how the, Mayor Cruzon said that the police did an outstanding job. And I believe that that outstanding job narrative would have stayed had there not been independent media showing video of people being maced, of people being beaten, who are restrained, and that would have been the narrative. The only reason there's a different narrative is because we had some independent journalists, Revolutionary Z had critical video, Tony, and that was really important. But from a protester point of view, my outside opinion is this, I come in DC, there protests there for years. It doesn't happen like that. And I'm not applauding DC police, because they have a lot of the same murder problems, and you go to Atlanta and other places around the country have the same murders. So there, there Anthony Lamar Smith's everywhere, and Mike Brown's everywhere, and all of that. But specifically with regards to how protesters are treated, it's very different. They will block off streets. If there's protesting going on, the police will block off the street. They'll let you continue to protest. I just came from Atlanta this weekend, there would be police protests there. The police blocked off the street, they blocked it off. Their concern was public safety, and they blocked it off. And the protests went on, there were no arrests. And a lot of other places, they do it this way. So I have reference points. But you come to St. Louis, and it's a whole different ballgame. You come to St. Louis, and it's met with aggression. It's met with a few, people are out there, and it's, it's cops in riot gear. Don't take another step, or we got you. Okay? They're not blocking off the streets. I've seen what the other thing looks like. So we have very, very aggressive cops, and we have to wonder, is the same kind of message that the protesters get, and the same very reason Anthony Lamar Smith was killed in the first place, or Mike Brown was killed in the first place, or Kajim Kepphal was killed in the first place? Because if you come from outside, the connection is very, very clear. Because if you come from outside, the connection is very, very clear. The last piece I wanna say, I wanna echo the gentleman, we talked about the disparity. Uh, I had the privilege of covering the protest a couple of weeks ago, post Jason Stockley. It was a, a huge white protest, there were like hundreds of white protesters. You know, this time around, post Stockley, you got hundreds of white protesters joining in. And they were shutting it down in front of a Billy Joel concert. Okay, downtown! And the cops were like, "All right, that's cool, we'll let you do your thing." And yet, one day later and one day earlier, there were like four black protesters, just people jumping on them, cops are jumping on them. We see such variance, it's so unmistakable between how white protesters are treated en masse in white communities, how dare you show white St. Louis how it really goes down on Florissant Street? So we're gonna talk about policing, we got to talk about the racial double standard and the privilege in protesting. And why strategically are police showing two faces to two different communities? And that has to be part of the problem, has to be part of the solution. And a lot of other people explain those solutions. But these are all problems we have to deal with. St. Louis is at the bottom of policing, which is regarding to protesters. And we gotta fix that too, in addition to all the mass killings. Thank you.
All right, so we have, we have two people left, uh, who signed up. Lacey Cagle and then Reverend Gray after that.
Hi. Um, I definitely echo everything that's been said. I think there are definitely police officers that need to be fired, that don't need to be on the, on the police staff here, but there are also huge systemic problems that need to be addressed. It's gonna take more than disbaring officers to do that. Um, and there's, obviously racism is the number one issue. I have a couple other things to add that I haven't heard, um, spoken yet. Um, one of the things is I think that the city government has a huge communication problem. People are, I feel like St. Louis has a really bad communications and, um, across the board. But I, as I'm sure most people here are, am just floored that Jeff Rorda is still speaking for the police. Um, I think there are people who are well intentioned who also communicate poorly. I don't think Jeff Rorda is one of them. Um, but I think that there needs to be, um, something that when we're looking for the police chief, it's not just about a good police officer who knows how policing works and how to, how to take care of police and how to do community policing. It's someone who can communicate effectively with the community. I think that, um, intentions and strategies need to be communicated effectively. And if they aren't, you're gonna still have problems, even if there are the best of intentions there. Um, and I also think that, um, part of communication, as, as the judge said, is, is listening. Um, I think we need to have people in charge who are going to listen to the community. And if you don't listen to the community, they don't listen to you. And if the community isn't listening to you, you can't take it personally and get all huffy and say, "Well, you don't wanna hear what I have to say," not to name any names. But, um, we need to have a police chief who's going to be able to say, "Okay, people are angry. There's a legitimate reason that they're angry. We need to understand this so that we can change it. We can't just make people not be angry anymore. We have to understand where that anger is coming from and we have to deal with the underlying issues for that anger." So listening is a really important part of communication and that's something that the police chief wants to have. Um, I also think imagination and creativity. We need someone who's going to be able to think outside of the box so that they can look at other places, places and see where community, or community policing has been done well. But also be able to see what St. Louis's issues are that are unique to St. Louis and be able to think creatively to, to address those issues. Um, so I think that's something that hasn't really been brought up. And I also think that, um, for community policing, we need someone who cares about the community and, um, shows the community that they care about the community. We also need someone who legitimately, legitimately cares about police officers and recognizes that when police officers are put in, in difficult situations, that they get the, the blunt, they get the, the big impact of the community's anger. Not blunt like that. They, they, they get the, they get the main part of the community's anger. Um, and so, keep, police officers are often the scapegoats for bigger problems that are happening in the community. Um, and we just let them be the scapegoats. We don't actually deal with the real problems. They're, they're the, the blue collar workers in some ways of the government. Um, and so we need a police chief who recognizes that and who's not just taking care of police officers by, um, having them get overtime or whatever it is, but who's actually taking care of the police officers. Um, and knowing that when there are bigger problems, we have to address those problems because they will have police officers who are getting, who are gonna have PTSD from their experiences. And so how do we prevent that from happening for police officers as well as for the community? So those are the three things that I thought that I hadn't really heard addressed, but I think are important.
Reverend Gray?
The reason they say congratulations on the glasses is because the police officer deliberately broke my other paper. So that's why they say congratulations. Um, I'm Reverend Darryl Gray, I live at 40. I probably shouldn't give you my address, but police know it already. The police know it already, they have my phone number, so I guess no big deal. Uh, but I'm a resident of St. Louis, I've lived in the city for about two years. Uh, I respect each of you and would never question your commitment to improving St. Louis. But when do you get to the point, when you say to the mayor, that everything that we've heard, everything that we've been hearing, we've heard it for decades? Nothing that we have heard is new. When do you get to that point? When do you get to the point where no more Fallon Parks, no more Ward 3s, no more Ward 5s, no more of these things, no more hearings, no more media, no more of all of this? When do you get to that point where you said, "Listen, all we need," I know Mr. Kennedy, Alderman Kennedy, "We can go back 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. Everything that has been said has been said over and over and over again." So when do you say as a committee, "Listen, we've really heard enough, it's time to make a decision?" I, I, I'm cautiously optimistic. Only because I know most of you, I know your histories, I know your backgrounds, because I've done my research. And so, because of that, because of you, I am cautiously over, uh, optimistic. There are a lot of people who think that protesters have not been able to articulate clearly what it is that we're thinking, uh, what it is that we want out of, out of the protest. And so, that's why I said I'm gonna stand up today. Um, what kind of police chief do we want? A police chief that does not work for the POA. That's gotta be clear. Uh, you know, any police chief that is afraid of the Police Officers Association, that's not the police chief we need. And right now, it seems as though the interim police chief and most of the senior police officers are scared to death of what Jeff and his ban of, uh, ban of misfits, too many of them, not all of them, might do. And let me be very clear, I should go back and say, I'm not anti-police. Protesters are not anti-police. We're anti-corrupt police, we're anti-killer cops, that's what we're anti. And so let's make that very clear. Um, we want a police chief that have acknowledged the existence of the African American Police Union and be very clear to acknowledge that in order to have to have a, a black police union, states very clearly that there is a problem, there is a racial insensitivity problem, there is a racism problem in the police force. Just the very fact that you need a black police union speaks very clearly to that. He's got to, he or she has got to acknowledge that. A police chief that is not afraid to recommend and/or support legislation and policy that allows for independent investigations of police shootings and does not see his or her position in, in an adversarial role to the circuit attorney. A police chief that believes that it is improper to police black communities and protect white property. We went to, uh, a mayor's forum in Central West End at the library. And somebody asked a question about the number of police officers in the Central West End. And the mayor responded, "Well, they pay extra money for more police." That wasn't a good response. White folk, rich folk, pay more money for extra police, therefore you get extra protection for your property. But people of color, poor folk, who don't have extra money to get extra policing, get less than. That's not a good answer. But that's what she said. A police chief that would aggressively seek to promote qualified African American officers. Right now, I understand that there are about 19 positions for police sergeants. About 19 currently right now. Right now, there are about seven qualified African American officers who should get promoted. We need a police chief that would do that. That would look at seven qualified sergeants, look at 19 positions being open, and make a move. A police chief that would demand that police officers get out their cars and engage with the community. Back in the day, the officer would get out the car, give grandmama a car, business car, "This is my car. Anything go on, you see anything, you need me, you call me." They don't do that anymore. So grandma has to call 911. She gets an officer she doesn't know versus one that actually has been trolling the street. They gotta get out their cars and engage, they cannot be afraid. They can't be afraid. A police chief that would not tolerate clergy being roughed up, pepper sprayed. And get, well, I, that was selfish, that was selfish. That was selfish, that was, that was very self-serving, I'm sorry, I, I had to do that. A police chief that would make, uh, a day one commitment to support an internal and an external audit of the police department. Now, this committee needs to tell the mayor to make a decision right now. About who you think that new police chief ought to look like. You should tell the mayor she should not wait until the new public safety director takes his position. Even though we trust him. Even though we trust him, she should not leave it to him to do what she should have done, and that's fire all too. She should not use him to wash her hands, to keep her hands clean. She shouldn't do it. But we got your back anyway. But she shouldn't use you to do what another mayor did to fire a black. Fire you. I'm just saying. I got your back. We have your back, long as you do the right thing. So, in conclusion. Tell the mayor to make a decision now. It's her job. It's her watch. It's her responsibility. She asked for the job, recommend, suggest, urge, whatever you need to do. Because you're on this committee because you have some influence with the mayor. We all know that. Oh, you got some influence. Be it individually or through your organization or through the folk that you hang with. Be it civic progress or... Y'all know who I'm talking about. All the people, all the people that you know that know her, that can get to her, that can influence her. You already know who those folk are, that's why you're on this committee. Most of you, some of you are on the committee because if they hadn't put you on the committee, they'd be held to pay. Mr. Kennedy. My Alderman. And so, it needs to be clear. Uh, I would think that after everything that you've heard, uh, not just in these meetings but in the streets, from protesters, from supporters, from folk, and, and, and the mayor needs to be clear, the climate is prime for another killing. The, the atmosphere is prime for another police killing. Police are angry. When the officer pepper sprayed me, he said to me, "We are tired of this." I don't know what "we" he's talking about. But that's what he said when he pepper sprayed me with my collar on. So if he will pepper spray me, throw me down, put his knee in my back with my collar on, what do you think he's gonna do to young black boys and young black girls out in the damn street? We have not heard a, a word from O2 since they own the streets, since they own the nights. We have not seen, we have an absentee police chief. Haven't heard from him. We haven't heard him say anything about Milton Green being shot. Except the lie he told about friendly fire. We have not heard a thing from the police chief as relates to an undercover cop getting his butt beat. I wanna use another word, but I'm among y'all kids. Y'all know what I'm talking about, undercover cop getting beat up. Black cop, we have not heard from this police chief. We need a police chief that's gonna stand up for what is right and tell the truth. And not be, and not be afraid because of what other officers may or may not say. But the only, the only thing, the only reason I can think of that O2 is not saying anything and being forthright is because he's part of the problem and not part of the solution. So if he's not part of the solution, he needs to go. So if you don't say anything else to the mayor committee, you need to say, "O2 is not the one." Thank you very much.
Thank you Reverend Gray.
Good evening, how you guys doing? Uh, my name's Ian Barczewski, I am in the 13th Ward, uh, over near Holly Hills. Um, I wanted to bring up something that Judge Edwards, uh, there you go, uh, said earlier tonight. And it really stuck with me and I think this is a very important moment for everyone in this room to notice. Um, I think everyone here who has protested agrees that we don't feel like we're being listened to. I, do we agree with that? Um, so, some, something you said was that you respect Lyda Cruzen and that you were embarrassed, right, when, at the, uh, town hall, because she came to listen and we all yelled at her, correct? I was embarrassed that her response was to cancel both town halls that she scheduled. I was embarrassed that when my comrades were getting kettled, she went to that same town hall and defended property. I went, and then she went silent for weeks before that. Um, at that same town hall, when two people asked her what good O2 was doing for the city, what would happen if we fired him, she wouldn't respond. And then she had the gall to say that night that all lives matter. Not Black Lives Matter, but all lives matter. There is nothing more offensive to the movement than to say all lives matter right now. And, you know, I, I don't think, I think everyone here knows, obviously everyone, you know, no one deserves to be killed, but Black Lives Matter is a very obvious statement, right? I think that's not hard to decipher. So when you say, "All lives matter," to a full room of black people, they're gonna get mad. They're gonna get angry, they're gonna feel like they're not being listened to. So, with the board here, with you here, I want you guys to know that you need to listen. You need to listen, you need to listen, because she's not. Everyone who has been protesting out there has given up on Lyda Cruzen at this point, me included. So, thank you.
My name is Nadita McKeen and I live in East Benton Park. I do protest. I am a stepmother of a son who was, who was killed by police officers in New Jersey. So what I'm looking for, when I go on my job, we do things like, uh, behavioral interviews. Because that means what you've done in the past will give whoever's interviewing you a insight of what you would do in the future if presented with a certain situation. I would love for our next police chief to let us know what he would have done and what actions he might, or she, would have taken in the event of what has happened over the past three years. Because that's the only way we're gonna know how that person would act. If the mayor and our new deputy did not and does not see anything wrong with black bodies laying in the street, gunned down, unarmed, then that is a problem. She shouldn't have her job. And Judge, I, I think you would, uh, care if you were in here. But you shouldn't have yours either, because that's a problem. So we need a police chief who is not afraid to say it's an issue when black unarmed people are being killed. And it is not just a black and white thing, because black officers killed my stepson. So I understand that as well. So we need somebody who knows that, or at least feels like, or emphasizes the fact that people are in the streets because we are frustrated, we are tired. There's no amount of letters from our elected officials that takes this pain away. This is something we live with every day. They get paid overtime. So be tired, expect us, we are not going anywhere. So be tired, expect us, we are not going anywhere. This city does not deserve a dime, not one, till you look at yourselves and see that there's a problem. They're killing us at will without impunity and it's okay. And someone needs to say, "Yeah, that was wrong." We need to, we need to investigate. It don't take all day and Lord knows, don't let it be another Russia investigation. It don't take that long. It just don't. Thank you.
Uh, so one of the committee members, Lisa, put together this presentation. So we just wanted to do a better effort, speaking of how we're communicating with the public about what we've done so far, as well as talk a little bit about where we're going in the future and what's left in the process. Uh, but I'm just going to walk quickly through parts of it. Um, next, so what have we done so far? Um, so following the first meeting at the beginning of the summer, we hosted two large public forums because we wanted to make sure that one of the first things that happened was that community had the opportunity to, uh, give input and, and have their voice heard on what needed to happen during the search. Um, then created an RFP based on that feedback for an outside firm to help recruit candidates um, to work with the committee. Um, then selected a search firm, IACP, the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Organized a town hall at O'Fallon Park YMCA so that community members could engage uh, with the representatives from the search firm. Um, then advised them on the creation of recruitment materials for the position of police chief, a brochure as well as a description, as well as giving them the report backs uh, from the forums that were held. Um, and then advise the director of personnel on the job description and the job posting. Uh, so next, just wanted to highlight some of the, the community input that, uh, that went into our decisions later on. Um, so at those two forums, four out of 10 felt that a search firm and outside search firm would yield the best process to find a police chief candidate compared to one of 10 for the internal personnel office. So that led us to look externally. Uh, the next slide. Uh, this is just a, a diagram that shows some of the major things that we heard, that we wanted a police chief that would be accountable, that would be open and transparent, skilled in de-escalation, on this community minded piece, which we'll go into later, to make sure that we as a committee, since we're advising the search as well as community members, can be educated on what goes into community policing so that it's not just a name that we're using, but we're actually doing the deep work that's involved with that. Um, and so here, I hope that you all will, will look through this. This is what will also be, have delivered to IACP and we'll, we'll continue to speak with them about. Um, so I hope you all will take the opportunity to look through this. Um, and then on the next step slide, if you could go there Carl. Um, so the CAC, um, later in this meeting, having heard your input, um, is going to review the interview questions that have been suggested by IACP, but have, we have the opportunity to edit them, to add to them, to make sure that they're actually hitting on many of these issues that we've heard throughout, from racism on to how the police department is managed uh, through, as well as recognizing the historical context in St. Louis. Um, and then IACP is going to screen candidates based on the guidelines that we've set. Um, once that screening has gone through, the final six individuals, candidates, will be, uh, selected to then come into St. Louis for a community forum. So there will be an opportunity for community members to meet these candidates um, and engage with them in a forum. Um, and we're aiming to have a set of panel interviews as well for important stakeholders. We've gotten input at previous meetings from the community about who are key leaders um, that should be part of this process in interviewing those candidates. Um, and then after I, ICP and the CAC will make a recommendation to the, to the director of public safety, who under the charter, uh, the city of St. Louis has the final say on who the next police commissioner or police chief is. Uh, and so that's kind of the outline of the next steps. Uh, it was mentioned earlier, but December 15th is the date um, that we're looking to, for the public, to deliver to the public safety director our recommendations, with the idea that it'd be by the beginning of, of this next year and that we'd have the next police chief.